We designed the entire unit layout. We made all the two bedrooms larger. We made all the two bedrooms with two bathrooms. That squeezed down some of the one bedrooms, the standard one bedrooms. And then we eliminated the efficiencies and made them a little over 100 feet larger, 110 square feet larger. So there are, there are actually an internal bedroom on the smaller one bedrooms. We call them a one bedroom suite in our mix. So you walk in, there's actually a separate area for sleeping. Then you have a large enough area for a living area, kitchen and dining. And it's actually a 500 square foot smaller one bedroom. And that was one of the things that happened, that we actually increased the building by a couple of units, doing it that way. But we increased the size of the twos, increased, got rid of the efficiencies altogether and made the different type of unit. It's been very successful in some of the projects.
And just as a follow up, was the decision to include now three bedrooms just a market decision or what's your take on that?
It was a market decision. It's also something that when you do three bedroom units, you are, or even generally you want to be a two bedroom plus den maybe if that's what you do. But a three bedroom unit would require a play area. It's more of a family housing type of building. Families could certainly live here, but we don't see this site, given the commercial nature of 26th and the, and the, there's not a park right there. It's, it's, we didn't think this was a family housing site. I thought it was more of an urban site.
Okay. Commissioner McGrino.
Um, reviewing the public comment that we got for this, it looks like there was a little bit of concern about the contamination on the site. And I'm familiar with how the soil vapor systems work for single family houses, but I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about how those work in a multi-family building and what precedent there is for that and if they've been proven successful over decades?
Though, yeah, there'll be a ventilator. Right now, there's a ventilation system that's ventilating the site and cleaning it. It pumps air through a series of filtration things in a kind of a garage building on the south side of the site. When our building's built, it'll still have to have a ventilation system, but it will be a series of small tubes. It's similar in a way, if you're familiar with what a radon system does in a house. And it will be ventilated through the entire building, through the roof at various points and run. And there'll be a, you know, a barrier underneath the, like a membrane barrier underneath the actual floor slab. We're not, we actually can't, for some reasons, put units on that part of the site. We have, that's why there's no units on the first floor altogether. But then the, the site that's right along 26th is actually a little bit better. So that's, it'll still have the same ventilation system, but that's why, one of the reasons for the form of the building.
And have those systems operated, you know, over decades successfully?
Yeah, that's a, yes, it's a well-tested system.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Nelson, maybe you can just help me understand the need for the alley access, since I understand that was an issue that came up. Is that something that's, that's your preference or did you get city direction?
Um, it's, it's, one of the things we have to do is demonstrate how waste collection works. It's at least needed for, our trash room is internal. There's not a, it's right here. We got trash and recycling room and chutes that come down here. So, you know, once or twice a week, things will be rolled out here. A garbage truck will come through, pick up, and it's impossible to turn around in there. So we need to do that. We need to get out. And we expect that they would come out onto Stevens and go out. But given the, given the location, I mean, that's one of the things, it's like you're, you're literally, you know, 70 feet from Stevens. We don't expect that a lot of traffic from our building would take the long way down through the residential alley. We think most people will go here because it's two ways anyway. And if anyone's going out onto, wants to get onto 26th or do a signaled intersection a block away or half a block away, they would go north.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to other speakers. And just so I have a sense, how many of you wish to speak on this? It's a handful of you. We can start with whoever would like to go first and please state your name and address for the record. I will ask that you keep your remarks concise and, and address the entire commission and speak to the applications that are before us. So we can start on this side of the room if no one's going to volunteer. And again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Carlo Casali. I'm a resident at 2615 First Avenue South. And I'm not actually supposed to be here. My wife gave birth to a baby girl last night and I've been with her at the hospital until just now. I'm here on her insistence because she feels that the decision that you're going to make is very important, not only for the future of our neighborhood, but also for the future of our family. I am here in part to represent a group of neighbors and residents who live in the immediate perimeter of this site. We have submitted and collectively signed a relatively extensive response to the applicant, application for a variance. I hope you've had a chance to read it. I'm also here to answer questions about that if necessary, but I, I don't want to take too much of your time. So I just want to say that we are neighbors that have been here for a very long time. We are, most of us homeowners. We are very committed to the neighborhood. We also share something else in common, which is that we are all, through no fault of our own, victims of the criminal industrial contamination of this site that was enabled by a combination of poor government oversight and corporate irresponsibility. Many of us have had our properties poisoned by the same toxins that are now removed from the site for the most part. All of us have lived for the last 10 years with the noise and the hazards and the dirt of an ongoing super fund toxic waste cleanup. We have also paid for this cleanup to the tune of $1.3 million in taxpayer money. And now we're here basically just to ensure that we don't have to pay for this again by having a building that is not appropriate to its surroundings and that does not meet with the expectations of neighborhood stability that are guaranteed to us by the city comprehensive plan is built here with the excuse of the toxic history of this site. So I just wanted to say a couple of specific things. The first is, for those of you that are not immediately familiar with this site, we're talking about a 70-unit, five-story building on a property that is immediately adjacent to single-family homes in two different directions, both immediately to the south on Stevens Avenue and immediately behind on 26th. My home is on 26th, is, excuse me, on First Avenue. My home is there. I think that it's extraordinary to have a building of this scale immediately next to detached single-family houses. There are two justifications that we have heard for this construction on the scale. One is the proximity to the activity center at 26th and Nicolet. The problem with that is that the comprehensive plan says, and I quote, "That development in between activity centers and the surrounding residential areas should ensure appropriate transitions between the high density of the, of the activity center and the lower density of the residential area." This building is higher density than anything that's in the activity center and it is more massive than anything that's in the activity center. I don't see how it can legitimately be considered a appropriate transition. It's also the case that the design of the building is exactly the opposite of what you would expect from a building trying to be a transition between high and low density. There is actually a step back on the side that is closest to the activity center on 26th facing west. And then as you move around the building, down Stevens Avenue towards the end that is near our houses, it gets progressively larger and larger until you finally have a 61-foot parapet that is one foot short of being the tallest building anywhere in Whittier. Again, this is surrounded by single-family homes. I have to say that this design of this building embodies our deepest fear about the building and the development and the logic behind it, which is that it is not designed to be a good neighbor to us, but it is designed to, as a harbinger of a proximate future in which all of us are also forced from our homes. Our houses are tearing down and they are replaced with another building exactly the same size as this one. I just don't think that the design is appropriate. We have tried to ask the developers about possible alternatives to this size and we always hear the same answer, which is the one that you just heard right now, which is that if the site didn't have a history of toxicity and if we could build an underground parking lot, then we would be happy to build something that conforms to zoning and that only has four stories. Problem with this argument is that this floor plan is significantly larger. It has significantly more square footage for residential than a building of that dimension. That's mostly because the additional floor is only half taken up by the parking on the ground floor. So this has another half floor of space. You add on to that the fact that there is no underground parking, so you're significantly reducing the costs of construction at this site. Add on to that the fact that the pre-existing construction here has been removed at taxpayer expense by the super fund. Add on to that the fact that there's an additional $200,000 still in the super fund that could be used for the expense, for example, of putting in an impermeable barrier underneath construction. What you have here is a building that is significantly larger than the building that would normally be built here, conforming to zoning that the developers said that they were happy to be building, to build, and is also significantly cheaper to build than that construction would be. So to me at least, it seems that what is happening is that the developers are very disingenuously misrepresenting the conditions of the site in the hopes that we're not going to say anything and you all, on the expectation that this is a distressed property that needs flexible interpretation of variances, will go along with this request. Another thing that I want to say about the actual history of the site. It is true that there has been a super fund cleanup here for the last 10 years. As of this July, they removed the container that was collecting toxins on the site. I know this because I watched them do it from the back of my house. Nobody ever said anything about that in the application. Nobody ever said anything about that in the city officer's report. This was a big disappointment to me. The conditions for development of the site have substantially changed as of this July. Without the toxic container on the site, it's much easier to accommodate toxicity in the soil. We also have some concerns about the way in which they have presented actual level of toxicity in the soil and the cost that would be involved in building an underground parking lot. There are all kinds of concerns about this site and as residents who have been living with this for a long time and have been waiting for the day when this gaping sore in the middle of our neighborhood would finally be filled, this does not sit well. Now, to be perfectly clear, we're not saying that there should be no building at this site. We are fully in support of the idea of a mixed-use, high-density residential building here, just not this big. And keep in mind, one, one last point about the design, because the parking is not included in the FAR, the perceived mass of this building is significantly larger than the FAR would lead you to believe because all that parking on the ground floor is not included in the FAR calculation. We have made a recommendation in our response, which makes very clear what we would think would be an appropriate redesign of the building. This would be one in which there is an agreement to have a five stories on the street face in the direction of 26th. Sorry, I don't have the, I wish I still had the picture there. So right now, there's a five stories on 26th with a step down to the adjacent building, that is an adjacent building that is already a three-story mixed-use apartment building. We're suggesting that the same can be done more gradually on the Stevens Avenue side so that you would have the parapet on the corner and then five stories, four stories, and then three stories by the time you get down to the end of the site. This design would imply a slightly smaller footprint with slightly less square footage for residential, probably closer to 60 as opposed to 70 units. This is in fact more or less what we heard the first time that we had this proposal presented to us at the community issues meeting. It would still be significantly more square footage than the four-story mixed-use building with underground parking that they just said that they would be happy to build if only that they could. So the feasibility of the project is not in question. The problem that we've had is every time we've had a conversation with these developers suggesting something like this, we always get the same answer. Not feasible. We're the ones that know the numbers. You're not the ones that know the numbers. Why should we trust them? It's their job to make as much money as they can. It's your job to stick up for us. So help us. Thank you.
Right, thank you. We can move, please, please no applause. We can move on to the next speaker.
Real quick, I just have a point.
Please state your name and address.
Daniel Oberperler, 2919 Knox Avenue South, Minneapolis, CPM Development. Just a quick, quick clarification on the Brownfields grant, money that's available. So there is a couple hundred thousand dollars left available on the grant. We are installing a vapor barrier. We do have to move the system where it's existing in the garage to the south and install it in the new building. This approximately adds about $25,000 annually for an indefinite period of time until the MPCA decides to tell us that the soil is mitigated to the operating cost of the building. So taking that into consideration, I just wanted to make a point that that is a system that we still have to deal with as it is still a super fund site.
Thank you. And we can move on to the next speaker. Who'd like to go next? Yeah, please state your name and address for the record.
Dave LaViolet, I'm at 2721 Stevens, so I'm a blocker so away. Basically, I oppose the design. And my whole thing is about how it affects the community because it's just, it's mostly residential there. We're two blocks off Nicolet, so, which is more commercial. But pretty much everything around that area is like two stories. This building will be the second largest or a second tallest building in Whittier. And according to the developer, the city wants density and they want it up to the sidewalk, which, you know, we, we went around with a petition and got 200 signatures from people within a couple block area that are opposed to this. So the other thing that always comes up is that the developer can't make a profit unless he builds this building as the way it is, which I don't know what the cost is to the community for something this big. And all we're really asking for is that the building is, is somewhat more consistent with what's around. Maybe a little more space off the sidewalk would help a little bit too. And the concerns about the parking too. Because Stevens right now is constantly full. You seldom can find a parking spot on that area. And then the thing that I found out is the MPCA, no one has ever contacted them about this project. And from the information that he was telling me was the fact that it's possible that they could remove 12 feet of topsoil, which would mean underground parking is possible. And depositing the soil could be done locally, which we've always been told that the soil can't be moved. It, it would have to be moved out of state. And the fact that no one can live on the ground floor, that might not be a true point either. So, so basically, we're just concerned about, you know, this seems to be a project that's being pushed through really quick without a lot of thought going into like the neighborhood at all and who lives in that area of Whittier. So that was the short, quick gist of it.
All right, thank you. Next speaker. Who would like to go next? Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Guariti, 2615 Stevens. How about park, the underground parking is the first. They talked about 12 feet and stuff. How does this work? Okay, there we go. About dirt removal and all that stuff and how big a problem it's, which we all know it is a problem. But if you look here, this is a grade level on the south side. This is the alley here and it slopes all the way down to six feet, all around this whole front half here. So as far as the cost of all this grade and all this movement of dirt and stuff, most of it's already gone. And again, the MPCA guy said we could go down 12 feet and stuff. The dirt can be moved locally, not shipped to Pennsylvania or wherever that is. So that just covers that. I went out there with my little laser beam and measured that. As far as the building goes, now I was here when dispatch was here and as you turned down Stevens Avenue, there's nothing but a warehouse wall all the way down that building and right to the sidewalk. And it was only two and a half stories tall. Now you want to have a warehouse wall from the corner all the way down to the very end. If you notice, no doorways, no entryways, no nothing, just a solid wall. So it looks like a color, colorful, you know, human dormitory type project, see? So as far as my recommendation should go is, I just copied this off his stuff. This is the commercial part on 26th Street. So let him have it up to the corner. But going back this way down Stevens, since there's all these houses and stuff, let's have a setback. Entryways coming in and some plants, trees.
You moved your paper a little bit up, so it shows up on the picture.
Yeah, I know, okay. So let's have a setback here so it doesn't look like one gigantic wall of a warehouse, which we had there before when dispatch was there. So that's my concern, just set it back, have some more entryways and stuff and lots of lights and stuff because this way it doesn't look like that entryway. We're all concerned of way too many people, too much density. The height, the height difference, they say, oh, it's about the same. The difference being the character of the houses. We all got 12-foot ceilings and stuff like this. We've got beautiful old Victorian historical houses. Mine was built in 1892. So the difference between that and this is, this is boiler room stuff coming out of the computer, you know? So anyway, I'll just briefly cover some of that as far as having a setback. They have all the green space in the alley. Let's have some green space on the street, you know? That's what people are looking at. So, and also the other thing is we have the opening in Nicolet Avenue. And we just had our first meeting, they're going on for the next month every Saturday because this is going to revolutionize Whittier, totally revolutionize. Once King Martin's gone and that street opens up, all the fancy restaurants are already being built, you know? So that's going to be really changing. So I'm saying don't jump into this right away. Let's get some more design and development from other people. And there's a lot of other people we talked to like, what? It's open for development now? So that's what I would say, don't, let's not have a rash decision here, you know? Because the building is a bad design. It's just a boiler room box, you know? So anyway, let's, I'll keep it short and simple, but remember there was a rash decision made in 1960s and that was King Martin blocking off Nicolet. We don't want that to happen again now. So this might affect the whole neighborhood because then everybody will start going higher and higher. So short and simple for you guys, okay? That's why we object to it. We're not objecting to the development. And Mr. Bell had a great design about eight years ago that was rejected. It's like, I'd like to see him bring it back in because now there's eight more years of pollution that was washed away and cleaned out and stuff like that. And again, having more green space as far as that aeration goes, if it's along Stevens, well then you got air with the water and the air can go down and flow underneath the building to keep that cycling going, you know? They want to have it cement all the way up to the sidewalks, all the way around. So, short and sweet, okay?
All right, thank you.
Asking any questions?
Uh, who would like to go next? For here, yes. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joe Schwager and I live at 2615 Stevens. I'm on the second floor and if this place is built as tall as it wants to be, I won't, I won't be able to see the sunset anymore. That kind of bothers me. This place just seems too tall for the neighborhood. You got a lot of people coming in. It's already hard to park as is. We got MCAD competing with our spots. So during the day, you cannot find a spot and it's not till like after seven or eight till you can find a spot. And if they're trying to bring in like 70 units and 30 units of parking, we got to compete with 40 extra cars. It's already a nightmare as is to find parking. And then you got a driveway pulling out into Stevens. There's a lot of traffic right there and if you got people coming in and out of there, you're going to get accidents. When it's rush hour, it backs up on Stevens real bad there between 26th and Stevens. And then you're going to have people pulling in and out of a driveway right there. It's not safe. It's not a, a lot of cars, a lot of car accidents I've seen, like, I've lived there for about five or six years and I've seen like, at least like four or five car accidents out there. And I would expect to see many more if you have people pulling out of a driveway when you can't even see anything when they're pulling out. I mean, this place is just a big box. Like it's totally classless and does not fit with the neighborhood. It's a very artsy, home, family-based neighborhood and this place doesn't fit. So that's what I say.
All right, thank you. Again, please no applause. Next speaker, who would like to go next? Sam, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Marion Bean, Executive Director for the Whittier Alliance. I would, this is 16 years of course and corners studies and work by the neighborhood, by Hennepin County, by MPCA. We always knew there was going to be a development there. This is only two-thirds of it. I couldn't bring it all. We always knew there was going to be a development there. We always expected that it was going to be high density. But the Whittier Alliance Board, I think you have a letter in your packet referencing that the board did not support the additional FAR variance. The FAR is a, you have to show hardship. The site is what it is and we're asking that although there will be a mixed use there and it will be dense, that the FAR be maintained at the 59,000, whatever. In order to address some of the neighborhood concerns about the intensity and the density, if we can reduce the FAR, maybe we can reduce the number of units. Whittier is a neighborhood that embraces density. It is dense. We expect more density. It doesn't all have to be at this corner. I'll show you the, the parking for what they are proposing is, is pretty good. But if they reduce the number of units and maintain that number of parking lots, it would This is, can you see it the other way?
180 degrees.
This is Stevens Avenue at 8 o'clock in the morning from, looking south from 26th Street. Sorry, this is 26th Street, Stevens Avenue from 26th Street, looking south. This is from 25th Street, looking south to 26th. So solid cars, both sides of the street on Stevens Avenue. This is Nicolet Avenue, same time of day. Those are curb cuts where the vacancies are in the parking. The area is fully parked. It will create a disadvantage and a deterioration to the businesses and to the residents who are currently there by adding that additional density. If we can reduce the density by a little bit, keep the parking, there can be underground parking. The ground is clear through, down to 12 feet. That does increase the cost of a development, but it also puts, it would also then enable some maybe street entrances from Stevens Avenue and activate the street, the Stevens Avenue side of it. One of the things that the neighborhood also was concerned about, which I know that the Planning Commission does not address, but it is the design. The design is, a design that has been built all over the city. And Whittier, of all neighborhoods, Whittier is very supportive and encouraging and tolerant of design that would be out of the box thinking, creative, making this a real destination or gateway building. And the developers have said that they will work with us on that, but I, we're looking to really push the envelope and create something that is a real asset to the neighborhood as well as the city. So I, in your capacity, I would hope that you could encourage that, both for the neighborhood and for the city. I think that's about it. If you have any questions, but I will say that we have been working with John Evans at Hennepin County and the MPCA and do have, they do assure us that with a vapor barrier, residential units are doable on the first floor. are doable on the first floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jorge Rivas. I've been a homeowner on the block since 1994. At one, now I'm at 116 on East 27th Street. And I'll make this really quick. I just wanted to voice more concerns of the neighbors in the area. The main one that I wanted to focus on, since everybody else has spoken so much already about other issues, is that that site already has a reputation in the neighborhood of being a Superfund toxic waste site that we've had to deal with this entire time, and that we feel that an explicit plan, a plan that explicitly says we're going to leave the soil in the ground and just build on the first floor because it's too expensive to remove the soil, kind of builds in and traps that reputation that, and I'm worried myself, maybe that even the developer doesn't realize that their building may take on that reputation. If you say we're just going to allegedly ventilate the soil that's underneath the ground, it will only take a few people claiming they get headaches or something like that, living there, even if it's not true, a result of the contamination, that it'll like cement that, oh, that's the toxic waste building, you know, that has the soil underneath. So we feel that the request for the variance hinges on this inability to remove soil to build the underground parking, and then the lack of parking and the high density produce all of the other issues that people have raised here. It seems like the request that we're making is pretty reasonable, that the, the one that I would like to focus on, which is that the underground parking, the soil be removed and the underground parking be built, and the building may, that would allow the building to be.